Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board's meeting, July 24th, 2023. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant. Do I have a motion to sign the warrant?
I make a motion.
Motion by Tom.
I would second that.
If I might, and I make that unanimous. The other thing I would like to have approved, the other item I'd like to have approved, is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of July 10th, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for July 10th, 2023.
Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And that unanimous. Also, we have two executive sessions that we need to have approved. One would be the minutes, the executive session minutes of July 10th, 2023.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 10th, 2023. I just want to make sure because this is one I raised myself.
Exactly, yeah. You need the 13th.
Yes, yeah.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, as well as the executive session of July 13th, 2023. Michael?
I would make a motion that we accept the executive session minutes of July 13th.
And I make that, and I second that and make that unanimous.
And I recuse myself.
There's the chief's request.
I would direct that I am Selectman Alafman.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing, and the public hearing will be the Central Tavern, which seeks to transfer its common victual's alcohol and beverages license and common victual's license to C.E.B.A. Incorporated doing business at Central Tavern. The property is located at 31 Central Street. The new manager would be Donnie DeSilva. And all paperwork is in order, and we have Attorney Ernest Pettenari would be representing C.T. Bar. Attorney Pettenari?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Ernest Pettenari. I'm semi-retired but still practicing law in the town. I'm over. And pleased tonight to be here with Donnie and with his partner Bruno. You gentlemen all know these fellows because we have been before you. They are the recipients and the, I consider them to be exemplary managers of the central market on Central Street, which is a recently licensed premise as well. In the last six months, they have negotiated for the purchase of the Central Tavern, which is located diagonally across the street from their market. They are eager and hardworking, and it's really a pleasure to be able to sit here and tell you how pleased I am to represent them. Their vision for Central Tavern is basically to preserve the presence of the licensed establishment there, to offer a little bit more and the broadening of services. They're looking for the entertainment licenses as outlined in the application. But again, I think that their record speaks for itself, and unless you have any specific questions about any of the particulars in the application, we would rest on that presentation.
Like I said, Ernest, I thank you very much for your presentation. Like I said, you have always been an exemplary attorney for anybody who does come before this board, and I thank you for that. And I do know the two owners that are going to be on, that are going to be on in the place pretty soon. And like I said, I was talking to the people from the downtown partnership, and they were excited too that we were going to be there as well, if you have some ideas, to help improve downtown as well.
Yes.
And again, you know, Mr. Appicanian, he had several years. They are going to be thanking him for that as well. I think he ran a very good operation himself. As of going over the department head review, building commissioner, C.A., is allowable in that zone. Town planner is okay, there's no changes in the actual use. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer has no comments. Fire chief has no objections. Police chief has no issues, and the border health has no issues. So we're happy as well. I'd like to hear from any member of my, of the select board. Tom?
I... One second if I could just...
Mm-hmm.
I have no questions.
Okay. Michael?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and if anybody from the public, either on air or present, has any comments or concerns, they can make their comments or concerns known now. If not, no one on air, no one here, so they were all set. Therefore, with no other comments or concerns from the public or from the select board, I entertain a motion to approve the transfer.
I make a motion to transfer common victory, all alcohol and beverages license, common victory license and entertainment license from Central Tavern to C.T. Bar, A.B.A. Central Tavern, which encompasses each of things, unless you feel we have to do a separate vote for the entertainment.
No, we're all set. Tom?
We have the entertainment licenses, yeah.
The only thing I want to raise is, you know, they do have a carryout license across the street if I can move assets from one to the other, that's the only...
They may know that, yeah.
No, no, just under chapter 138, just to, you know, flag it because I don't want them to walk into a trap.
Yeah, right. Thank you for that, Jim. I make a motion that we approve. So I make that unanimous. I'd love the best to you both, and Ernest, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Nice to see you all. Thank you.
Have a safe trip back to Maine.
Thank you.
You're good. Great lawyer, good lawyer.
Keep him busy.
Yeah, that's right. Keep him busy.
Thank you.
Good.
Next on the agenda would be scheduled appointments. We don't have any right now. Town administrators' report is the next item on the agenda, Rick. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, just one item tonight. I just want to update the board and the public on the municipal aggregation plan. I participated in a Zoom conference with representatives from our consultant, Good Energy. The firm is preparing the town's municipal aggregation plan. They just sent me a draft plan for review. I will be getting that to you. The plan at one point will be posted on the town website. It will be sent to various media outlets for the public's review. A public hearing is required. That will be scheduled so that there can be additional public comment and suggestions. At that time, the plan can be tweaked or modified if needed. It will then again come before this board, as you also will need to review and approve. The goal is to hopefully submit the plan to the Department of Public Utilities, the DPU, by early fall. So they are trying to streamline it, they are trying to somewhat fast-track it, so I will have more to come as time goes.
Excellent. Thanks, Rick. Thank you. Dennis, good to hear. Like I said, we're getting a lot of comments too, and appreciation from the public regarding that. The higher the electric prices go up, the more opportunity we have to bond in with another leisure supplier as well, which is good. If you buy in bulk, you get a lot cheaper. Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you.
Now, next on the agenda is old business. Any members have any old business?
We only have the one item dealing with the complaint as far as Amazon and resident, you know, could we reroute off of South Main? We can't. We have to provide an alternative route. There is no alternative. Without going through an enormously extensive process because it would involve neighboring communities as well as state DOT. A state DOT would be involved in any event. So we're going to see tractor trailers on South Main Street. Yes, we are. It's just a measure of to what degree, and that's what we've asked them, is could they space things out? So we're still working with them.
Okay.
But you just can't, you can't create a no-truck zone. Now, they've done many of them voluntarily on different smaller streets because you can't swing a tractor trailer without damaging property, so... That's what we...
And I appreciate that, and I can see that they have been making a long and hard attempt to more or less help us in regards to what's going on.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
It's one of the old ones, and fear and some people understand.
We're close with them, you and Mr. Valani, and it seems to be coming okay. Like I said, as long as there's communication and what we could expect, some expectations, whether it's good or bad, as long as we know, and that's the way to go. Michael, any old business?
Well, I think it's important is that, you know, to comment what Tom just said, that they also work very hard trying to be a good neighbor. Anything that, you know, people in town, you know, groups go to them for any kind of contribution, they're always the first to say yes to everything. So I understand that, you know, the trucks are a concern, but you know, traffic is a concern in this community.
Sure is.
So, you know, so they are, they're very open, they want to work with us, and that's important.
It is very important. Thank you for that, Michael.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda would be the new business, Milford Youth Commission appointment. We have an email from Brendan Rickard, Chair of the Youth Commission, recommending that the board appoint Christine Wake to the commission, as Suzanne Turtelot has declined her recent appointment to the commission in attached talent bank applications. And Ms. Turtelot, I guess, has a lot going on, and she would not be able to dedicate the time that it would take to be on the Youth Commission. So she had to decline our appointment in the past meetings. Again, Chairman Rickard did recommend Christine Wake, and if there's any more comments or concerns from the board, I appreciate that before you go into a vote.
I would make a motion to appoint Christine Wake to the Youth Commission. We held off the last meeting solely because we had already appointed her to a committee. We want to make sure she be comfortable and serve on both.
That's great.
That's really what it came down to.
Sure.
I make that motion, and I was welcome. Christine, for her efforts and help in the end.
Right. Thank you, Tom.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you, and best of luck to Christine, and thank you, Brendan, for your input. Much appreciated. Next on the agenda is a Milford Veterans Department acceptance of gifts. We have a gift from Joanne Rosen, and she gave a gift to the Veterans Department in memory of Carmela Sirdoni, and she had a little note to Janet Flamair, who's the assistant at the Veterans Department. Dear Janet, it was what's sad is that I have to tell you that my mother Carmella died on June 14th, 2023, at the young age of 104. She almost made it to 105 on July 4th. God bless her. Please accept the enclosed check as a donation to the Milford Veterans and her memory for all your kindness and benefits that she received from the Veterans Organization. And that's great to hear from one of our departments for the town, that they have been kind enough and, and, uh, very kind to our people in town, that they actually gave a donation in memory of their deceased family members, and we appreciate that from Joanne Rosen in memory of her mom Carmela Sirdoni. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think it shows the sensitivity of the Veterans Organizations in reaching out, but 104 years old, you know, God bless her.
Yeah, that right. God love her.
I fall on my knees, well, I don't fall on my knees anymore, but I pray every night that hopefully we hate, and then for the family to recognize the Veterans or the department, who is really the catalyst of the other organizations. I make a motion that we accept the gift of $50. It's really very, very common.
Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, and thank you again. Next on the agenda is correspondence from the Fire Chief Mark Nelson and Deputy Chief Tassino in response to a request from a resident, Laurie Shaw, who's here tonight. Thank you, Laurie, for showing up and presenting yourself too, to install no parking signs at intersection of Grove and Poplar Street. And, you know, there's a file here with quite a few emails and all that, but just to sum it up, I guess Laurie did observe a lot of situations that were considered safety violations as well, where Poplar Street is such a narrow street, and it's very difficult for fire trucks, oil trucks, ambulances, et cetera, to get up that shop and never turn from Grove onto Poplar Street. And she witnessed the guys actually coming out of their ambulance, first responders and fire trucks to actually direct the apparatus up the street and whatnot. And like you say, when, when there's an emergency, time is of the essence, and we don't really need people to get out of their trucks to waste more time, valuable time, lifesaving time to this. So what she is suggesting is no parking signs in that area. And we also have with Mark Nelson, he sent us a letter too stating that, I just read it, it's only paragraph one. The section of Poplar Street from Grove Street to Claflin Street is narrow. There are stone walls on both sides of Poplar Street beginning at Grove Street. There are no posted signs, but if a vehicle was parked on this section of Poplar Street, it would be effectively blocked. This is not, a new issue on this street. The multifamily at 44 Grove Street has a small driveway accessible from Poplar Street that may overflow onto Grove Street, and we are familiar with this neighborhood, and even when fire engines were, were smaller that years ago, this section of Poplar Street still was an issue. It is normal for us to exit the engine and help navigate in tight areas as required when backing up. I would defer to Deputy Tassino on where to recommend signs. No parking on one side of Grove Street in the area of Grove and Poplar, or no parking from here to corner may be helpful. Parking is congested in many neighborhoods, but we are usually good at navigating or using an alternative route. The section of Poplar Street with the stone walls can be accessed from Claflin Street, which is much wider from that end. And we also have a note from Deputy Tassino that he agrees with the initial assessment as well as the suggested remedy. That area has been very difficult to transfer us, to say the least. No parking signs should be erected at at least one side of the street. Any members have any questions or concerns regarding this? Chief?
Mr. Chairman, I went to that location in the past week and a half, six times. During bad weather, where many of the people that are contractors would be home, meaning thunderstorms. I went there Sunday morning, I went there on a Saturday morning, I went there on a Sunday afternoon, Saturday afternoon. I was there six times. I saw a vehicle once, it was parked, and in my professional opinion, it would not have impacted the access to that particular side street. That said, you know, what the fire chief says, to swing a fire engine in that side of that small stretch of Poplar is very difficult, and that's why they come in from the other side, from Claflin, in the most part, or they embark the vehicle. I mean, they pull hose, they have to, all the time. They take stretches out of ambulances all the time to get up people's driveways and otherwise. I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't do no parking. I just don't agree that we should do no parking for the distance on both sides of the street. I just don't agree with that. I don't think that it resolves the issue on one side of the street. I would suggest that we have Deputy Chief Tassino and Chief Nelson go back to us and tell us which side of the street from this point to that point. And I'm in full agreement that if you clear one side of the street, you're going to create an angle. You're always going to have, you're never going to put a ladder truck up there. I don't care if you try to back it up there. It's not going to happen.
Right.
So you might back it so you can reach the ladder to that particular house on the corner, but aside from that, it's just not going to happen. And I'm not questioning the woman who brought this to our attention. You know, what Laura's intent was, she sent us photographs, she saw these things. I don't question, I'm simply saying what I saw. Do I think there's an issue there that can be resolved? Yes, I do. It's what's the resolution? No parking both sides of the street from 39 down to 45? I don't agree with it. And I would not vote in favor of that because I think the more we take away parking from residents, all we're doing is pushing it down the street on top of someone else. So I would have the people that operate those trucks, meaning the fire chief and the staff, and the deputy police chief take another look, just simply tell us specifically, here's where we want the no park. That's my recommendation.
Michael?
I would agree that I think that we should have the deputy chief, you know, reevaluate it, but I was there today, and although there was only, at the time that I was there, I was outside 41, it was one vehicle down the street. I did observe Poplar, and I don't know how they would ever, I said, they must pull down and back up, you know? And I think that, you know, I think that making our first responders have to go a different direction to get to a fire because they can't get up the street with a fire is, to me, is unacceptable. What I would like to see is, I'd like to see no parking on, on the odd side of the street, which would be the right-hand side of the street. And then I'd even go as far as to say, no parking here at corner. I'm not looking to put no parking on both sides, but I think we should put no parking on the odd side of the street, which would be the 41, and then no parking here at corner on both corners, which would give the fire truck at least the opportunity to come in and make a wide turn. I agree with, with Selectman Alafman. You'll, I don't care what you do, you'll never get the ladder truck up there.
Right.
In 100 years. But I think we, it's our responsibility, you know, to, to make it accessible to the fire department, because why should they have to go a different? And I personally spoke to the fire chief as well as the deputy chief today, and the fire chief told me, they, when they get a call, they, they know they have to go around. We have a responsibility not to allow that to happen, in my opinion. So what I, I agree that, you know, the deputy chief is already telling us that he agrees that something should be done. I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to see the no parking on signs on one side, which Selectman Alafman has said he agrees with, but I'd go one step farther. I think we should, if possible, pin the corners. I'm not looking to block the whole side of the street. For pin the corners...
Yeah, in other words, like a certain amount of footage.
So the truck comes down, makes a wide turn, and now can try to get up Poplar. That's my opinion.
Okay. So we have two different, you know, we have two opinions that are almost similar. And again, even Deputy Chief Tassino does say no parking signs should be erected on at least one side of the street. I'd like to hear from Ms. Shaw, if you can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Gentlemen, this is, this is Laura Shaw. What do you want?
What about Grove?
Grove.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
So I, I listened to both of you, and I agree to some extent with both of you. Having been a resident there, Mr. Alafman might have just luckily caught a time this weekend when it wasn't so busy, but typically it's very busy there. During the day, it's not because people are working, but I do see, I happen to have a camera, and I sometimes catch a lot of people parked outside on the camera. However, at least on the, the odd side of the street where the fire hydrant is, as you can see in one of, as you can see in one of the pictures, people can park in front of the fire hydrant, which creates another safety issue.
I know that's another issue.
Another safety issue. I understand, I know I had a proposal to, to try and block off both sides of the road to a certain extent. I understand that that would certainly be a challenge to do that, but I would like to propose from the fire hydrant on the odd side, down at least right past my driveway. And then, as you had mentioned, the corners of, of Poplar, so that an engine or a large vehicle can at least, if you have to go 20 feet back on either side of the corner of Poplar, it'll widen it and allow for a little bit more maneuverability for these large trucks, not just fire engines, just large trucks of any kind, to get up and down that street. And if you open up the odd side, then there, there isn't any traffic, so they can swing around and get up, or even come down and swing around. That's my proposal, at least the odd side from the fire hydrant to the end of my driveway, maybe to the end of my driveway, which could create a little bit of a problem trying to get out of the driveway if someone parks right there, but understanding your constraints, at least to the end of my driveway and across the street, 20 feet back on either side of Poplar. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, the corners are easy because it's a bylaw anyway. You can't hide them within 20 feet, so to post those signs, that's really easy, Laurie. But it's, you know, my thing is, I don't know the distance the fire chief needs. So the fire chief said to me, no, go further back than 41, because I have to come in and I might have to use some of the sidewalk, I might have to tangle. And that's all I'm suggesting, is go back to the fire chief and let him and the deputy police chief come back to us and say, from point X to point X on the odd side.
Absolutely.
And then I'm all in favor.
Sure.
And I wasn't there just the weekend. I was there weeknights, I was there weekdays, I was there different times, six times. And that's irrelevant because your pictures speak for themselves too. So what I'm getting at is, you know, I might have, you're right, I caught the lucky times, I guess.
You did, you caught the lucky times.
But my thing is to, why not ask the people that actually drive those vehicles? Because if you can swing a fire engine or an ambulance, you know, because the fire chief will go talk to the ambulance folks as well, you know, they fall within his purview, then you can swing an Amazon truck.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying is, we need to post the signs to get it done.
Right.
And I'm not saying it takes a lot of time. I'm willing to make a motion to approve it based upon the recommendation of the fire chief and the deputy police chief to Rick Valani, so it gets moving. So I'm not trying to stall it, stay it, because I don't want anybody to get hurt.
No, understood. Yeah, I understand.
I'd even go as far as to say that have the fire chief bring Engine 1 up there. That's a...
Well, that's, that's...
Bring Engine 1 up there during the day when it's fairly empty and say, okay, if we put the signs from here to here with the deputy police chief, bring Engine 1 up and, you know, say, okay, here we go. Okay, so let's mark it here from here, you know, at least still we'll have an idea.
Sure.
You know, I, I think that we need to approve it, you know, pending the...
No, I'm happy to just leave it to their judgment, and they can let Mr. Valani know. I'm not trying to tell the fire chief how to drive a fire.
No, you're not having to tell us.
But I think, as you mentioned, the road is so narrow to begin with. One side will help. I'm not, I don't think it'll clear up the problem completely, but it'll help.
Sure.
And so let's just go from there.
Okay, we'll try that first.
Yeah, or at least 20 feet back on the other side.
Wait, no, you can do the two corners as well.
Exactly.
It's already bylaw.
Right, right.
So that's easy.
Okay, so there's no, is it assumed that people would know that, or should there be signs?
Yes, I should be.
People should know that they shouldn't go through red lights, they should know they shouldn't go through stop signs, they shouldn't speed. Okay, sorry.
That doesn't work.
It doesn't work. Otherwise, the courthouse would be empty.
Right.
So it's, it's all good.
So there aren't any signs for no parking here at corner now?
No, genuinely, no, but we'll erect those. I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
But it, it's not common that we do it, otherwise, you know, signs, signs everywhere, a sign, we have signs all over town.
Right.
There are some locations that have actually done signs, because people can't even get that trash picked up, you know? It's a tight swing.
Right.
So I appreciate, I appreciate the issue, I appreciate your emails and your photographs. That was very helpful as well. It's just, I, I'd rather rely on the expertise of the fire chief to tell me where, what the sign.
Okay.
On that side, that's all.
Okay, so we know that the signs are going to go up at least across the street from here to corner.
Right, exactly.
So on the...
And on the other side, we know the signs are going to go up. It's going to deal with the fire chief and the deputy police chief come back and tell us.
Decide on. Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Good enough.
Thank you for your time.
I'll let their motion to accept this.
So I make a motion that we allow the posting of signs on the odd side of the street as designed by the fire chief and the deputy police chief, Rob Tassino and Fire Chief Mark Nelson. On the other side of Poplar, excuse me, the other side, Grove.
Grove Street.
On Grove Street, we will erect signs that there's no parking consistent with the bylaw.
Exactly. Michael?
I would second that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, next on... Okay, next on the agenda is a Department of Inspections resignation. Attached is a letter from Ricardo Tarzano. And reading it in its entirety, I guess Ricardo, you know, he started, I believe, in December, so he's only been here for a short time, and he did make an impact on inspections, especially enforcing zoning, which is much needed in this community. Anyway, he has other family obligations and it's been a very difficult decision for him to make. And he wishes, you know, the building department well, and he thought it was a fantastic department and he learned a lot. And his last day would be September first, two thousand twenty-three, which would hopefully give us plenty of time to post and hire a new member for the office. Anyway, again, we hate to see him go and he's been here for a short time, but he did make a good impact on inspections. Do I have a motion to accept his resignation?
Make a motion to accept. Very nice guy and I think that he was part of the team, so we accept his resignation and we wish him well.
Very good. Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. He wrote a beautiful letter.
Very nice letter and very, very best to him.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is also a resignation from the Conservation Commission, and it's from Noel Bontempo, who was a member, I believe he was chairman of the, just last year. I did some very good presentations at town meeting regarding articles for the Conservation Commission. He needs to accept, as he wrote the letter, to me, to myself. Please accept this letter as my resignation from the Milford Conservation Commission. It has been an honor and privilege to serve on this commission, and he thanks the board for allowing him for this opportunity. Sincerely, Noel Bontempo. Anyway, best to him too as well, like I said, he was a very good member of the Conservation Commission and he'll be missed. Motion to accept resignation?
Motion to accept. He served in, represented the town, you know, exceptionally, so his town will be missed.
Next on the agenda is a-
You second that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. I would second that, Mr. Chairman, and Rick will make sure we get a nice letter out.
Yes.
Just a, yeah, just a nice, you know, nice, nice individual who dedicated himself to the community for many years.
And next on the agenda is a Fourth of July Parade Committee acceptance of gifts. Attached are gifts of the Milford Fourth of July Parade Committee from PINS, who gave two thousand dollars. Viewmasage and Funeral Home gave fifty. Leach Properties gave a hundred. First Unitarian Universal Church of Milford Creative Community Childcare gave a hundred and fifty. And the First Universal Church, a hundred and fifty dollars. And we'd like to review these gifts and what would be appreciated.
I make a motion that we accept the two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the Milford Fourth of July Parade Committee. And that we thank each and every one of those community organizations and faith organizations for stepping forward to make a very, very positive difference in the community.
Sure it does. Sure it does. Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody, for the generosity.
That's for sure. Like I said, the Fourth of July Parade Committee is a very good group of individuals who work hard all year round, not just for the Fourth of July, but they provide not only the parade, but also the carnival. And like I said, we, these donations really go a long way. I'll tell you right now, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the Milford Police Family Services acceptance of gifts. We have gifts from Afonso Realty, which is five hundred dollars. First Unitarian Universal Church, two hundred and fifty dollars. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Middle Sex District Attorney's Office, four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, so the title of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Middle District Attorney's Office is actually the Worcester County District Attorney, Joe Early.
Right.
So Middle Sex is a different, just, I want to give Joe Early his plug because I know his commitment to community organizations. He donates also to our youth center.
Yes, he does.
And many others. And, you know, that's a significant contribution of four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. The work that Amy Leoni is doing on community impact. Afonso, you know, Realty, you know, five hundred dollars is a significant donation as well. That'll go towards really helping people that are in their toughest moments. And it helps Police Devan and the work, as in the gift from the church, the First Unitarian Universalist Church. You know, we talk about mental health issues, we talk about, you know, people with addictions, we talk about other illnesses, and here are people that are stepping forward to make a difference in people's lives. So I make a motion that we accept these gifts and I think that we, as a board, should send a real thank you to each of these contributors because they're helping those people that are faced with the worst moments of their lives. To frankly bring them back so that they're thriving like the rest of us. So that's my-
And I would agree with that. I know that all three of us, you know, every year, you know, we all know that Amy Leoni does, and her community impact does great work in this community, but all three of us have attended many times the event that she puts on every year at Chris's Corner. And when you see, to Selectman Olafland's point, when you see the families that are affected, the families that she's working with, so for the donations these people have made, you know, as Selectman Olafland said, it's just, it's a huge impact, it's a huge help for, you know, for mental health. And I just want to personally say thank you and I gladly second that motion.
And I also want to ask, thank everybody too, those who did donate. Like I said, Joe Early, like you said, Selectman Olafland, has always been a very good help to the town and, you know, the youth center, the high school, various projects for the youth. And now here, over four thousand dollars, I think is fantastic and we really appreciate that. And like you said, there's other donations too that came up, five hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars. And like I said, it's a great organization too that we have to help these individuals, like the low-level offenders who need help, their family needs help. It's not only to help them, but to help those who surround these individuals as well, to get them through, like Tom said, the toughest times that are being through that.
You've heard Amy say many times, it used to be, and Selectman Olafland can appreciate this, having been a chief for so many years, it used to be that they used to treat just the individual. Today, they treat the whole family because it affects the whole family.
I think that's right. And these are our neighbors, so whether there are neighbors, there are relatives, there, you know, so I think that for us, simply to send a letter to each of them to say, you know what, thank you for caring so much for others and making a difference in their lives, it's greatly appreciated. And I think coming from us, it sends that message that they are doing human's work, they are making a difference in people who are in the toughest moment of their lives. And you can, Amy Leoni, she'll tell you, and I've worked with her, you can save people, you can bring them back, and it's an incredible experience, so that'd be my suggestion.
And that's what you mentioned too, that Joe Early, that's his philosophy, instead of jail or hospitalization, try to fix what's broken, you know, and that way there, that'll help not only the individual, but the family as well, who would help out the individual to get together and help them out. Again, so we got a motion from Tom to accept these gifts.
I would second that.
Second it, and I make that unanimous and thank you so much.
We could just send a letter.
Exactly, Mr. Valani. Right. Next on the agenda is a contract award for the installation of flooring at the senior center. They're recommending, recommending the award of the contract they go to the bill dinner. And we have it right here. It's for the Business Floors Incorporated. They're three D Condon Way in Hope Dale, and their quote is thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Any comments, any concerns, any questions?
Mr. Valani? No, that they were the only bidder, they only appropriated, so we used them before.
So that makes them a little better.
That makes them a little better. We have a sufficient appropriation.
I make a motion that we accept the bid as presented to Mr. Valani.
Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Can I make that unanimous? Thank you. Invitation to speak? Anyone on? Christine's there? Okay. The other thing would be correspondence. The only correspondence that I have, that I had, and I think we all got the email regarding the property at the former Gibbs Gas Station on the corner of East Main and Cedar Street. Again, that's something that I remember Mike and Tom and myself brought up in the past to see what's, what was going on with that. And like I said, if we could just get the owner to give us an update in a schedule of what he's going to do with that.
I think it's beyond our authority. I mean, we're talking about, he's developing the property, it's not fully developed yet. He has to meet the guidelines of the planning board.
Right.
Let him meet the guidelines of the planning board.
Yeah, but is he actually doing that? I mean, is he, I don't know.
But isn't that for the building commissioner? I read that email, and the building commissioner said, there's no issue here. So isn't that a responsibility of the building commissioner in dealing with the planning board to make sure things are progressing well? I, I don't want to step into the realm of the responsibility of the planning board.
Right. And I don't either, but on the other hand, if, I want to see some progress as well, if they're progressing, how?
The building, the building's been rebuilt. The building itself has been all cleaned up, it's been rebuilt. We're talking about, I read an email, where two-track trailers took the shortcut to go through the lot so they don't knock the sign down or our light pole, which we, that property owner through the planning board allowed us a right of way to move our traffic light onto the property so that it wouldn't get knocked down anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Thousands and thousands of dollars. I, I would suggest that if that individual that sent us the email has a concern, he ought to go back to the building commissioner and back to the planning board. That's where it sits right now.
Sure. Michael?
I personally would like to have the owner come in and just give us an update. That's all I'm asking, is just, just, let's have a conversation because, you know, I've said in the past for the longest time, you know, you come to Milford, just say, example, you come to Milford for a wedding, the first major intersection, you hit off a four ninety-five, if you come off an eighty-five, it's that. I'm not saying that the owner of the property hasn't made improvements. Yes, he has. But could he just come in and, and I agree with Selectman Olafland, who's got the responsibility, but he can just come in, sit with us and have a conversation so that we, when we're out in the general public and people are asking us questions, we can give them some kind of positive feedback.
Well, that's why I asked too, because I have no idea what's going on there.
Yeah.
You know, people ask me, I go, I don't know. What's that building? I thought it was like a small modus, a VPS shop, I thought. That's the last I-
My understanding, a used car dealership is my understanding from everything I've looked at as far as the planning board and any discussions I've made, the phone calls and talking to the building commissioner.
Okay.
If he's progressing with the work he's doing, I mean, he's a known businessman in town, you know, he's done good work in town, he's been here for many, many years, and I just, you know, one email and we're going to bring in a business owner.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm saying, you can even do it with an email. What are your plans for the future?
One email from one individual, now we're going to bring in a business owner, is start to question him as far as his responsibilities to meet what the planning board said.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I just want to have a conversation with him. I just want to just say, you know, just tell me your plans, you know? When do you think you'll finish? What are your plans to do with it? Just have a conversation. I'm not looking to interfere with any other boards.
Exactly. No, no, that-
If those are our questions, we should be questioning the planning board.
Sure, all right. That's the same thing I want to ask too about Archer Robb.
Attorney Booney's raised.
Just, I'm just trying to, when something is another board's jurisdiction, you want to be careful about having people come in because then they come in, they talk to you, maybe, and end up with conflict between those other boards that have actual jurisdiction in your board. So you really want to take care in doing that. You're always best off, when you get a letter like that, tell the landowner or the complaining party that this is where you have to go. Go to the building commissioner, go to the planning board. But when you have them in, it creates expectations of things that are said or not said when they go to the planning board, well, the selectman said this, the selectman said I can do that, and then you're in a conflict. Obviously, just generally, be careful with that. Jerry, the intent was not to step on any other toes. You know, believe me, being a board health person for over forty-five years, I don't want anybody to step on my toes either. But on the other hand, it's just to inform us of what the hell's going on.
Again, I'm just saying, I'm not saying, don't do it, but be careful with it.
People ask us, you know, so if we have to go to the planning board, they ask us and we'll go. I just wanted to know where we would get these answers, such as I wanted the answers too for what's going on down Archer Robb. It's been in that same condition for several years now, and it's an ISO and it's a potential safety hazard. You know, I just want to know what the hell's, what's going on with that too as well.
We do have the new person, the economically developed person. He is already reaching out to Archer Robb, for example. He could certainly reach out here, I have reached out here, maybe that's the way to go, rather than only bringing the person.
Yeah, whatever way to go, Ricky, I mean, I'm not going to dictate which way to go. I'm not like that.
Yep.
But I just like the answers, how you get them.
Bring in John, who you'll meet, and probably next year or being after that, actually. He's going to be, he's already working on some of these things. That's what he's been charged with from this board and on other things.
It's just difficult when you're out in the general public and you get people asking you questions, you can't give answers, you know?
Yeah, understood.
You know?
Yep.
Anything, anything you can do to help us, you know, get some information, you know, would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we will be reaching out. John's already started that process.
Okay. Next would be, we have an executive session. Anyway, sorry, anybody else with correspondence?
No.
No?
I don't have any.
All right, great. Anyway, I think we had enough. But anyway, we, right now, would like to go into executive session, and we will not be returning back to the regular meeting. We want to consider the reason for the executive session, to consider the marketing and value of town-owned property and real estate assets because the chair determined that an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the negotiation position of the public. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved. Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Okay, unanimous roll call, both to go into executive session. And we'll do that now, and we, again, we won't be going back into the regular session.